Welcome to the reconvene regular meeting of council from this morning, Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. First thing is, would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Reverend Burgess Protem. Five members present.
Thank you very much. We are now going to go to Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. We have some outstanding bills. Would the clerk please read the outstanding bills?
Bill 1704, Resolution amending Resolution 726 of 2022, which reappropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version 5. Bill 1705, Resolution amending Resolution 411 of 2022, which authorized an amended agreement or agreements with the URA for the completion of projects approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan by decreasing the not-to-exceed amount of $1 million to $71,878,711, and by aligning project lines accordingly. Bill 1706, Resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23rd, 2020, as amended entitled: Resolution adopting and approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021-2026 Capital Improvement Program by increasing bridge upgrades by $928,291.1, increasing capital equipment acquisition by $219,833.99, reducing complete streets by $1,500,000, reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $264,124.88, reducing information systems modernization by $35,875.12, and increasing public safety equipment by $651,876.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, my understanding is there is a...
That was only two.
I'm sorry. You paused to take a breath, I thought.
I did.
I wasn't reading along with you.
That's a lot of words. Bill 1707, Resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27th, 2021, as amended entitled: Resolution adopting and approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program by increasing capital equipment acquisition by $569,078.55, reducing complete streets by $774,000, reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $1,566,121, reducing information systems modernization by $183,879, and increasing slope failure remediation by $1,954,921.45. Bill 1708, Resolution further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 19th, 2022, as amended entitled: Resolution adopting and approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Program by increasing capital equipment acquisition by $907,063.37, and reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $257,063.37. Bill 1709, Resolution amending Resolution 525 of 2021, which authorized an amended cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $219,833.99, for a new total of $10,629,313.99. Bill 1710, Resolution amending Resolution 43 of 2022, which authorized the 2022 cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $569,078.55, for a new total of $13,112,81.36. And Bill 1711, Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to commit future 2024 pay-go capital funds for the local match of the Department of Transportation's RACE grant in an amount not to exceed $2,274,000.
All right, we're going to have discussion on the bills. I understand there is amendment for Bill Number 1704. Ms. Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to approve? No, we're in no. Oh, we reconvene. Sorry. No. Sorry.
Thank you. So I have a motion to amend Resolution 2023-1704 by substitution.
There's a second.
Second.
All those who favor any discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And we will explain what that means in a minute. So what I'll do now is we will go right into the public hearing. We will explain the amendment in a minute, and then we will have public hearing. The public will respond, and then we're going to come right back to this group, okay? So I need a motion to recess for a public hearing.
Two, three.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now recessed. All right? All right, now, we're going to go into the public hearing. For the cable people, do you break our conduct? Let's go straight Welcome, everybody, to the... Good afternoon, and welcome to Pitty Spitsburg City Council Cable Cast Public Hearing for Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. It is a hearing on the ARPA bills, which we just amended. And so our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, is going to come and explain it to you. But let me say from the onset, for those of you who were here from the arts people, we just fully funded back the art line item. That's where the... So that you can still, if you want to, but I'm just telling you, that was the action that happened very quickly before the meeting started, all right? And so when you talk, you can talk from the benefit of that line item. It's already been fully restored. Our Budget Director will now briefly, briefly, go over the ARPA bills before we have the members of the public talk.
Okay, so we have bills in front of us, 2023, 1704, 1705, 1706, 1707, 1708, 1709, 1710, and 1711. Bill 1704 amends the ARPA funding plan, so it just splits up how the funding is distributed to different various projects. Resolution 1705 updates, it's an amendment to an agreement with the URA in regards to the ARPA funding. 1706 is an update to the 2021 Capital Budget in relation to the ARPA updates. 1707 is an update to the 2022 Capital Budget in relation to the ARPA distribution. 1708 is an update to the 2023 Capital Budget in relation to the ARPA allocations. 1709 is an update to the 2021 Equipment Leasing Authority Cooperation Agreement to reflect an increase in ARPA funding to the fleet. 1710 is an update to the 2022 ELA Cooperation Agreement to reflect the increase in vehicles as it relates to the ARPS plan. And 1711 is a budget commitment in 2024 pay-go funds to the... As a local match for the RACE grant, and we're using 2024 pay-go, so next year's pay-go funding, in replacement of the $2,274,000 that was allocated in the ARPA plan but was removed. So if you'd like, I can go through each one of the changes in the ARPA plan.
No.
All right.
Thank you very much, unless members have questions. But I think we have questions of our budget.
Well, I would just say I'm reserving, like, discussion for that.
Okay, can we go back?
I was just going to communicate with the director, so he's going to come after.
Okay. So we're just announcing it for the public to make their way in and then come back to the bills. We've already done that.
So, may I?
Yes.
So, I apologize. I was out.
Councilwoman Strasburger and I have been discussing this at length numerous times about our desire to see the Arts Council fully funded. My name, I'd like to have my name added as a sponsor to the amendment of 2023-1704, and appreciate Councilwoman Strasburger making sure it ended up on paper here on the table for us. And Peter, you too, thank you. Yeah, but no, I'm proud to have my name on it and be a supporter of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to the public hearing part of our agenda, and I will tell you, you have a right to talk to us. If you don't talk to us, we will get this done faster than not. But just so you know, that if rather than a lot of you speak, you may want to pick a person representing all of you, because not all of you want to have the same conversation. But in case you did, you do not need to do that. All right, so let's do... I have registered guests, and I will go for the registered speakers first. I have Nathan Ruggles. Nathan, are you with us?
He's not.
Oh, is he?
Nathan, are you with us?
Hey, Nathan.
I'm here.
You're giving three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
You can start.
Very good, thank you. Yes, my name is Nathan Ruggles. I'm from Mount Oliver City Neighborhood. I would like to invite everyone here to take a moment to recall, close your eyes if you like, to remember something beautiful you have seen or experienced in Pittsburgh. Perhaps it's a painting in a gallery, a sculpture in a garden, a mural on a building, a dance in a theater, a singer on an outdoor stage, or live theater in a performance in a park, perhaps a musician playing in a plaza. Now, when we think of these things, those things that make life worth living, that enriches life, that makes us feel whole, it's these beautiful things that come to mind. When we think of those things that every city has that make it what it is, that distinguish it, that make it distinctive, that give it its flavor, that makes a city more than a place that you live, but a place that you love, it's these cultural and arts moments and events that come to mind. Now, we need to remind ourselves that essential to these works of beauty are people, people that have to put food on the table and a roof over their heads in addition to having time to produce and rehearse and improve their craft. Now, the pandemic has hit these folks hard, loss of work, loss of jobs, opportunity. The people in arts organizations were some of the hardest hit by COVID. Their incomes have not returned. Audiences have not returned and are not expected to. Poverty among local artists has increased, according to the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council. Now, for myself, as an audio describer for patrons who are blind or visually impaired, most of my work was in the theater. You can imagine how that went during the pandemic. Things are coming back, but just last week, I was told by a client, a Pittsburgh institution, that while they thought I did good work, that the problem is, we don't have the money, they said. So it comes down to this. We can see those beautiful images in our minds' eye. We can call it beautiful and say bravo, but, you know, those might be kind words, but words don't pay for rent, for theater space, for spare guitar strings. You can't eat words. They don't ensure a future for families. Without many, one of two things happen. Either art goes elsewhere to other cities that value their contribution, or they simply disappear. Hardest hit are those who don't have higher extra income. Art then becomes the province of the well-to-do, of born, of by, and for the few. We need art of Pittsburgh, for Pittsburgh, and by all Ginzers. So beauty does not just happen. It needs funding to pay for it, at least through the recovery. I ask, what do they contribute to our quality of life and our identity, our souls? Beautiful things can't be taken for granted. We have a choice. You have a choice. Are we going to help beautiful things bloom, and people who create them to blossom? Are we going to watch them die on the vine and wither away? I ask you and urge you to restore all the funding for the arts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It takes us to Naomi Muller. Naomi? She's on? Naomi?
Here.
Your turn.
Here. Shady trees, not shady deals, in Bon Air. I am so happy that there is money available from the co-cidians' participation that can benefit neighborhood's life on air. We've been harmed by the waste, fraud, and abuse surrounding the long, empty elementary school building. First, do no harm. It's not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or be held accountable. Walk busting and infliction of emotional stress have occurred against Bon Air, and those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we, the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proved themselves to be enemies of Bon Air, and that's not advisable. The waste, fraud, and abuse of the school tax resources is tremendous regarding the long closed school. Fraud by claiming that there was community support, abuse by making it a psychological handicap, that we have something hanging over us and might be taken advantage of. And the waste is the thousands of dollars every single month towards the maintenance and paying the real estate to try to sell that building. The school board has proven itself as detrimental. Will you be part of the solution? There is no benefit to leaving that building empty, to having people break into the building, and to have continued broken windows, broken, like, repainting, et cetera. On Saturday, April 29th, last year, we had a meeting for Bon Air Green Space. Again, no one from the Board of Education showed up. Also, not a single citizen wanted anything other than a green space to replace the school building. Our voices are being ignored in Bon Air. We are being harmed. This is inexcusable. This dictatorial, superior approach of Pittsburgh Public Schools is abhorrent to the people with the government that was created of the people and by the people. Jessica Benham and Anthony Coghill both attended our community meeting. Thanks to our elected state representative and city councilman for being there. Now that McKinley Park is no longer in our neighborhood, we want the school to become a green space, the building taken down, and a beautiful pollinator garden to replace it. Open deal.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Patrick Fisher, followed by... Patrick Fisher, followed by Morgan Kaprowitz.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Fisher. I'm a resident of the Strip District and the CEO of the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council. On behalf of the staff and the board of the Arts Council, I thank City Council for amending 1704 and keeping the funding with the arts. Our role in the community requires us to be an advocate for the artists that live and work in our community, but it also requires us to be a partner of others in our community. And as such, we're happy to partner with the city's administration in any way possible for a win-win scenario that makes sure that the funds dedicated to the arts through ARPA are utilized in a manner that is equitable and impactful. So please know that city administration can call on us to assist in rolling out those funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Morgan?
Hi, all. My name is Morgan Kasparowitz. I'm a resident of Troy Hill and Director of Research and Special Projects for the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council. I just really want to say thank you. Thank you for the very quick work for the amendment, for restoring the arts funding via the amendment to Bill 1704. I'm going to skip all of the data that supported that and just say that in the past few years, we've heard many Pittsburgh-elected officials invoke the value and the power of the arts. We've heard public declarations of the need to engage the arts in our most pressing challenges and opportunities, including public safety, public health, workforce development, attraction and retention of a workforce, the development of 21st century skills for our schoolchildren, community connections, and more. For those of us who work in the arts, we are beyond ready to have those conversations with all of you. And we... In order for us to continue to be everything that we have been in terms of the arts to the community, in order for us to grow into everything that we could be for the city in the next 10 or 20 years, we do need your help now. We are grateful for this movement today, and we look forward to having this conversation in the future. Thank you all so much for your action today.
Thank you very much. That's James McNeely, followed by Emily Brown.
James McNeil here. I'm the Managing Director of City Theater over on the South Side in District 3 and a resident of District 7 up in Lawrenceville. I too brought some data and some receipts that I'm going to skip and just say thank you for the amendment. It means a ton.
She's on twice. Okay, it's James McNeil. So I did that. Emily Brown, followed by Jay Thomas Agnew. Emily, are you here? Online, Emily?
I am online. I too was going to speak about the arts, but I am also interested in talking about community development. So I'll just introduce myself. My name's Emily Brown, and I'm the Senior Director for International Economic Development Council, which is a national nonprofit. It's based in DC. I'm also a resident of Troy Hill in Pittsburgh. And my life's work is identifying what makes strong economies. And Pittsburgh, you know, it's done a great job. The ever-expanding tech industry here attests to that. And I think that it's really important to continue to invest in the arts, as arts make a place good to have a good quality of life and create the kinds of experiences that inspire us and bring us together. And I would also like to just note that investment in public spaces also do the same. The Cali Rec Center in Troy Hill has been slated to have a significant amount cut from the redevelopment of it. And this is a public good that increases our quality of life. In our neighborhood, the Cali Rec Center and the accompanying Splash Park is a major resource. On the weekend, the Splash Park is a really beautiful scene of children playing and families gathering. But unfortunately, overlooking this happy scene is the kind of foreboding brick building, which is degrading rapidly with broken windows, plants growing all over it, and probably some animals living inside of it. I would say that this entire area needs to be updated. We in Troy Hill are doing a lot to improve our neighborhood and look forward to partnering with the council, who I know that our council member has been very supportive of our efforts. And we hope that we can continue to work on the Cali Rec Center redevelopment together.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Jay Thomas Agnew, followed by Adam Villain. Jay Thomas Agnew, is he online? In the chambers? Nope. Seeing that, the last registered speaker I have is Adam Villain. Adam?
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, as well as a lot of the previous speakers, wanted to speak on behalf of the Support for the Arts Fund. And while I had a lot of data prepared, I just wanted to revert and thank the council for the amendment that was just passed for Resolution 1704. And I just wanted to speak as a former artist and a band member that played in a pop-rock band for the better half of eight years, that I just wanted to reinforce that the cost of being an artist, I just want to state that it cannot be overlooked, from, you know, from the gear, it's rehearsal spaces to recording, from merchandise to getting albums pressed, the cost of being an artist in the City of Pittsburgh is still very high. And it's... I would really love to encourage the council to work with arts leaders to figure out how to further invest these Support for the Arts funds within the artistic community. Going back to the Pittsburgh Music Ecosystem Study that was authored in 2018, one of the top opportunities from the study was described as building Pittsburgh as a more vibrant and vibrant music ecosystem. I just want to stress that we can't be a vibrant music ecosystem if we're not supporting the artists that make up that ecosystem. So I really encourage the city councils to work with arts leaders to make sure that there is an equitable solution for this funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our registered speakers. If there's anyone in front chambers that wants to speak, you'll be given one minute. Is there anyone in chambers who wants to address us? I have to say it twice. Is anybody in chambers who wants to address us? If not, this concludes our public hearing. I need a motion to adjourn the public meeting. Need a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's nay. We are adjourned. I want to welcome you to the reconvene meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. Our first order of business is roll call. We ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Reverend Burgess Protem.
Here.
Eight members present.
All right, that brings us back to our one committee that is open finance and law. I assume I have to read the bills again? I'm not sure. What do you think? Do I have to...
They're on the table.
They're on the table. I'm not sure we have to read them again. I'm not... I don't know that we have to. Do I have to read them again?
Can't hurt.
All right, so read the bills again, so that everyone in the public knows what we're doing. This is really for sunshine and transparency.
1704. Bill 1704, Resolution amending Resolution 726 of 2022, which reappropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version 5. Bill 1705, Resolution amending Resolution 411 of 2022, which authorized an amended agreement or agreements with the URA for the completion of projects approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan by decreasing the not-to-exceed amount by $1 million to $71,878,711, and by aligning project lines accordingly. Bill 1706, Resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23rd, 2020, as amended entitled: Resolution adopting and approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021-2026 Capital Improvement Program by increasing bridge upgrades by $928,290.1, increasing capital equipment acquisition by $219,833.99, reducing complete streets by $1,500,000, reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $264,124.88, reducing information systems modernization by $35,875.12, and increasing public safety equipment by $651,876. Bill 1707, Resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27th, 2021, as amended entitled: Resolution adopting and approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program by increasing capital equipment acquisition by $569,078.55, reducing complete streets by $774,000, reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $1,566,121, reducing information systems modernization by $183,879, and increasing slope failure remediation by $1,954,921.45. Bill 1708, Resolution further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 19th, 2022, as amended entitled: Resolution adopting and approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Program by increasing capital equipment acquisition by $907,063.37, and reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $257,063.37. Bill 1709, Resolution amending Resolution 525 of 2021, which authorized an amended cooperation agreement... which authorized an amended cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $219,833.99 for a new total of $10,629,313.99. Bill 1710, Resolution Amending Resolution 43 of 2022, which authorized the 2022 Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $569,078.55 for a new total of $13,112,813.36. And Bill 1711, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to commit future 2024 pay-go capital funds for the local match of the Department of Transportation's RACE grant in an amount not to exceed $2,274,000.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Now, before I ask for discussion on the bill, I just want to make sure the members are reminded that we are not in standing committees. We are in final action. There should be limited conversation with outside people other than us. This is not the time to cut up the bills as we would on standing committee. This is not the function of this meeting. And we can do something different, but that's not really the purpose of this meeting. I just want to remind you. So we should not have long interrogatives with outside people because that's not the purpose of this session. Although we can have some conversation. Make sense? So I'm not saying not to have any. Just be mindful that even though we're at this table, we are not in standing committees. Okay? All right. Now with that, you've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? I saw Mr. Wilson first, then Ms. Strasburger. I'm old, right? I have a senior moment. And then you want to say something to that thing? No?
Sure.
Okay, but then, and then in that order, Mr. Wilson first.
Well, Mr. President, I just wanted to comment on what you said because just at the last meeting, at standing committee meeting, I just said to the public that I want to make sure the public did have, you know, you know, transparency in what's happening here, which means like talk about it in public. So I was actually going to bring it back in standing committee, but for the sake of time last
Rivety.
Last Wednesday. Yeah, so you get it. So if you allow me, I would like to call Director Pollak to the table.
Pollak?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Bring whoever you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. President and Councilman. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Director and
CFO.
You want to, what's that?
Sure. Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget and Deputy Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you both. So I just wanted to, you know, I don't need to reiterate, but just wanted to talk about what's happening here. Specifically, I have a few different things. I don't want to belabor any of them, but can we just talk about the change to the land bank? Moving 3,500 from there to the URA. Can you explain the reason?
Was that? 3.5 million, not 3,500.
I mean, 3.5 million, yeah.
So if I could, I'll give a general overview and then Patrick can fill in some of the details as needed. The overarching intent of this amendment, and this has been consistent since the beginning of the Ghaney administration at the beginning of 2022, is that we will continuously review the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds every six months because those funds have a firm expiration date, if you will, at the end of 2024 for funds expended, you know, on an operating basis and where on a capital basis must be fully obligated and under contract by that point and fully expended by 2026. So understanding the time sensitivity of those funds, we're reviewing them every six months and making adjustments to the plan in order to ensure their full expenditure and thus the city's ability to maximize the impact of those funds by the expiration point. This round of amendments seeks to achieve that objective. In almost, in every case, I would argue, though in different ways, this allocation's objective is to examine which projects in the version of the allocation plan as passed by council last December as part of the budget are on track for completion by the designated date, which are still priorities. There's nothing on that list that is not, does not remain a priority of the city generally, but might need to be adjusted in the level of funding allocated to it in order to meet the expenditure deadlines in the federal act. And as such, we're making accounting adjustments, if you will, to the ways in which we deploy federal funds to meet those objectives. This reallocation primarily has two purposes. One is to, first of all, the basic operating support that ARPA provides to the city's operating budget isn't completely unchanged. And we continue to stand behind the understanding that the ways in which ARPA has helped the city on an operating basis deal with the negative economic and thus tax receipt impacts of COVID will be unchanged from the original plan. And we expect to have recovered in tax receipts by the end of next year from where we started. And as a result, the operating support has done its job in preventing us from unnecessarily having to reduce operating activities while dealing with the temporary revenue loss from COVID. As it relates to capital projects, a number of capital projects were funded as a part of the ARPA plan. Of those projects, some are already complete and in fact are complete and had excess funds allocated to them that weren't expended to get them done. We're always proud when we allocate funding to a capital project, it's completed and there are funds left over. So we are reallocating those residual funds as we would normally through the capital budget process. Some are on track and we are preserving funding for those and some are behind schedule, which is again, not an uncommon thing when we're dealing with complicated investments in city facilities that can take longer than anticipated. In those instances, in this reallocation of ARPA funds, we are reducing the funding made available to those projects, not because we do not remain committed to the achievement of those projects, but because we understand as of the last month that they're not in a position to fully expend those funds by the ARPA deadline. And we intend to offer to council in the annual budget process a capital budget that fully funds those projects or an explanation as to why we're changing the nature of those projects.
Specifically to the 3.5 million that goes to the URA.
Apologies, that's where I was going. I was trying to give a general overview. Where's going next is the transfers to outside agencies, which is, again, I don't, I would not characterize the changes we're proposing there as fundamental changes in intent, but rather a more updated as the, it's a genuine, or continuously shifting landscape. More precise method in accounting for what we're seeking to achieve. So council was gracious in the 2023 budget in awarding to the Law Department the authority to establish an associate city solicitor for real estate and in migrating some of the three taxing body staff that the city already had to report to that associate solicitor when they had previously reported to the Law Department. In the past six, actually seven months, that work has been underway. We, the city, have had a more sophisticated and dedicated staff partnership to work with the Finance Department, the URA and the Land Bank staff on figuring out how to best expend the funds dedicated to the Land Bank. And the determination was that in the 18 months we have remaining under ARPA authorization, we can expend about $3.5 million through the Land Bank's specific powers to clear title. And that of the remaining $3.5 million that were allocated to the Land Bank, the same objectives could be achieved by providing the other $3.5 million previously awarded to the Land Bank to prepare the next wave of properties for stabilization. So the fundamental principle of stabilizing properties, clearing their title and positioning them for reuse remains the same, but the method in which we would expend those funds is slightly adjusted to suggest that some of that would go to title clearance and some of it would go to placing new roofs or securing the buildings.
So my understanding is with internal conversations, the 3.5 million going to the URA would stabilize properties that the URA already has?
Yes, already within their portfolio.
So they already have vacant abandoned properties that we're going to stabilize and then, was that true? They already have, is there?
These are properties that are already in the URA's hands that we believe are candidates for ultimate disposition through the Land Bank. We don't think we can get them all the way through the title clearing and disposition process between now and the end of next year. We think that we can do that with the most ripe properties in their portfolio between now and the end of next year. And between now and the end of next year, we can secure these so that in the 18 months following that, you know, the first, 2025 and the first half of 2026, they can feed into the future post-ARPA land bank queue.
I'm confused. The cities are at the, I mean, the properties are at the city right now or at the URA?
These properties are at the URA.
But they still have to have title cleared?
Yes.
Okay, so then
There are many titles, there are many properties with unclear title that are presently in the URA's.
And we're going to use the Land Bank to do that title clearing?
We would anticipate potentially using the Land Bank to do that title clearing in 2025 and 2026, having stabilized the properties in the next year and a half.
So we can stabilize a property before we clear title?
Yes. If we own them, we can stabilize them. We just can't sell them without clearing the title first.
Okay.
And we plan to separately in the 2024 proposed budget, address the stabilization of city-owned properties in a similar way.
Okay, and then the other item I wanted to talk about was Cali Rec Center. So that is reduced again here. And I just wanted to understand where the project is. So there will be 750,000 remaining. And I should say, I appreciate your commitment to the project and your commitment to talking to the community and the transparency that, you know, you've given to the community so that they can understand. But not everyone goes to those meetings and
Sure.
I still get phone calls and emails about what's happening with Cali Rec. So just so everyone can understand with the money that, well, why is the money being reduced?
Remaining
Even further.
Let me answer it the opposite direction but arrive at the same point. The funds that remain dedicated to that project are sufficient to complete the current feasibility assessment there and to proceed into design, which is everything we can achieve in the next 18 months before the ARPA funds are no longer on the table. So the funding remaining is sufficient to continue, to ensure that the process of determining the future redevelopment and reopening of that location remains on track. Additional funds had previously been authorized. We're not in a position, based on the current status of the project, to expend them before the deadline. And so we are moving the funds that we have allocated to the project but have not yet expended into supporting other capital projects that can be completed in the next 18 months. We remain committed to the redevelopment of Cali. We will have to close that construction gap in future capital budgets with either pay-go bond or other funds once we have designs that express to us the total cost of that work. But nothing, no time will be lost, no delays will be encountered with this change. We've left enough there to complete what can be completed by the end of 2024 and we are committed to filling the rest once we know the full amount.
And so what we've discussed with the community, what you've relayed to them is that the feasibility study needs to be done first before the design. So do you know where that feasibility study is now?
Already underway, nearing completion. And we know enough from the early findings of that to know how much we need for the first phases of design, which are also included in what's left remaining in that line in order to ensure that when the feasibility is, the feasibility study is concluded at some point this year, that enough funds remain to proceed to design next year and end 2024 with a viable product that can then be funded in future budgets.
Okay, and then I don't technically represent Jefferson Rec Center, but there is, you know, a big line item being taken out and
Yeah.
I represent constituents that are concerned about that North Side community center as well.
Jefferson Rec Center presents a lot of physical challenges. I would agree with you that it serves a great number of general North Side residents from both your and Councilman Lavelle's district. The site itself and the building itself present real challenges to an effective deployment of those funds. We don't believe that we have a clear understanding of the best way to address that, be that in future funding for reinvestment in that location or in investment in other locations that are similarly close, Cali being one, Fowler being one. There are other locations nearby where the preponderance of the folks who actually use Jefferson might be as closely or more closely connected to where we could meet the same service needs. Northview Heights, of course, being also another. So I don't think we, we know that the challenges of that site are significant and are not going to be resolved in the next 18 months. We want to serve all of those residents in the best way possible, whether that's at that location or in investments in nearby locations that can meet their need. We're going to have to figure out in the time remaining, but we would not be responsible in saying we could spend that money and redeveloping that site at this time.
Great. And two that I'm really pleased to see increases on are the review, the Davis Avenue Bridge, the Riverview Park. And then also the Mellon Square storefront support for the downtown storefronts that are on Smithfield there. Could you elaborate on what the Mellon Square storefront support will entail?
Very briefly on Davis. The increases there correspond to quotes for construction costs that exceeded the previous budgeted amount, which is not unanticipated in this market. So the increases there ensure that we're able to deliver the project we were already committed to, but it's more expensive than when we last got budgetary estimates and that's the reason for that change. As it relates to Mellon Square storefronts, I appreciate you raising that. As you all may know, but the general public might not, it's a complicated site. Mellon Square itself sits at the top of it. It's a city parklet that is under contract for the management, under contract to be managed by the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy and do a great job there. The parking structure itself, which goes several layers underground, is owned by the city, but under the management of the Parking Authority. Again, they are working diligently to maximize its impact. The storefronts along Smithfield Street that are part of the site but a layer down from the square itself have suffered during COVID and its aftermath from a lack of occupancy and have as a result become an occasional an occasional point of intersection between our unhoused residents and the public generally when they are vacant. We have taken steps through OCHS, police, and in partnership with DHS to address the needs of the unhoused residents who congregate there, but so long as the storefronts remain unoccupied, that's a continued potential point of interest for all of the agencies involved. It's difficult for those storefronts to be occupied in their present condition because they are constructed in a manner that makes it difficult to have plumbing there, HVAC there, kitchens there if you were to want to operate a food-based business. So we have allocated funds in partnership with the URA and with the support of the PDP and other downtown stakeholders to make physical improvements to those spaces in the way that they're plumbed, the way they're ventilated and elsewise to make them more marketable so that we can attract commercial tenants there, reactivate that block of Smithfield Street and provide community-serving opportunities to downtown.
Thank you. Those properties are managed by the URA.
They're managed by the URA for the purposes of leasing them out. They're owned by the city and managed by the URA under contract. The URA has expressed in clear terms, which I can't dispute, that in their current condition, they're difficult, if not impossible, to market.
I'm just wondering for the renovations, who will manage the project? Is that URA or the city?
Be a joint project between their management requirement and our financial support and oversight. We would work together to achieve an outcome which, uh, is financially responsible to the city for our investment, but also marketable by them through their contract to market it. So we'd rely on their business, um, development expertise and our own internal project management expertise to produce a product that they, that we can own and stand behind, but which they can successfully market to the private market.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming, uh, onto, into council and some, some different, uh, different type of, uh, meeting here, but thank you and appreciate your time.
Mr. Wilson, that takes you to, to Ms. Strasburger.
Mr. Chairman, briefly, I apologize.
Yes.
Uh, something comes up, I have to step out. May I register high votes on these bills?
I'm not sure you can. I think we have to do a roll call. I think this is where it's final committee, I think. So I'll bring you back, we'll come, stay in the hall, we'll bring you back.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Strasburger.
Thank you. Um, well, first, before he leaves, I want to reiterate that this was a joint, that the arts funding amendment was a joint effort between Councilman Kraus and myself. Um, I want to say that, um, just trying to decide where to start, that the arts, making sure that the, the arts funding remained in place, um, was, you know, we heard loud and clear from the advocacy community and the arts community that this was a priority, and I know all council members heard that and, you know, were supportive of this, um, this amendment today. I wanna thank the administration, Deputy Mayor and, and Chief Cornell for, for your, um, uh, cooperation on this and, um, for Director McDevitt as well for his huge help making this happen today very quickly. You know, I, I know this wasn't easy, um, because whenever we're discussing something with the budget, we're taking from something else, but I think artists have demonstrated throughout the pandemic that they are deserving of support, and, um, I know that in kind of ensuring that this, this funding remains in place for artists, it creates more work potentially for members of the administration. So I, I, I wanted to reiterate here what I said privately, which is, I would be more than happy to volunteer to work with the council, the Arts Council to, um, and others to put together an equitable plan to ensure that we are, um, following the rules that are set out by the federal government under ARPA and distributing money, um, you know, in, in the form of payment for services to artists to help support them over the next year, um, in, again, in a way that's equitable, envisioning hiring artists of all sorts to attend city events all over the place. I mean, the vision could be ensuring that we're casting a wide net through partnerships, um, with groups like the Pittsburgh, um, Arts Council and, um, and, um, you know, exposing even more members of the public to even more artists and helping them to, to earn some money in the same time. Um, I also want to note that, as I mentioned before, this does then take about 443, um, $443,000 from, um, what was called the Public Works Data Infrastructure Upgrades, um, bundled together, kind of, um, tech, technology upgrades for various rec centers, potentially senior centers or maybe just rec centers?
Both.
Both, both rec and, and, um, healthy active living centers. Um, and that is also something I support. So I will stand along any, alongside any council member as they advocate for full funding for that in their, um, in their own districts in the 2024 budget process. Um, and also then a reduction in the Pittsburgh Technology Center garage by about 206,000 for, uh, an over $3 million project, so a slightly smaller proportion there. But, um, you know, I, I, I also support, I wanted to register here, I support rec centers, I support our healthy active living centers, those are integral, especially the youth and, and children's centers for, um, making a vibrant city, making sure that we have, um, we are addressing everything from out-of-school time to youth violence. So, um, anything I can do to support that in the upcoming budget, I will. But, um, really pleased that we are able to get done what we got done today and thank everyone for, for their support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cogill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, I think it's also a good cause, that amendment towards the Arts Council is a good thing. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank you and the administration for working with my office to reallocate and allocate new monies toward our vehicle fleet. But I also wanted to bring up that, you know, in order to right-size our fleet, we asked for $24 million, I think, last year. We appropriated, what, $3 million, close to three, or close to $2 million recently towards the acquisition of police cruisers and a fire truck, correct?
With this proposed adjustment to the ARPA plan, I, I, with this proposed amendment to the ARPA plan, we will be able to fully satisfy an order of 60 new police cruisers, which is roughly twice what we annually order and which I would agree is necessary to catch up on COVID-era related disinvestment of the fleet that led it to, um, us to overextend the life of some vehicles. This allocation would also, in addition to fully satisfying that 60 police cruiser order, place us in a position to order a new fire pumper or aerial truck. Pumper at this point is our best understanding of the need, um, but given the state of the fire fleet and the, the vehicles under maintenance, we might change that from one to the other. In either case, we will be, we will meet a double, if you will, um, infusion of new vehicles to the police fleet and meet the most urgent need of fire. If that is a pumper, which we expect it to be today, or, uh, might it be an aerial before the end of August when we complete that process? In either case, we will order the vehicle most critical to fire. In, in, in both instances, we have work remaining to do to, um, uh, meet their needs, in particular in fire. Um, that's not a new problem for the city, and it is a problem that's exacerbated by the fact that the, uh, lead times on new orders have grown exponentially since ARPA became available, and many cities like us have spent a portion of that funding ordering new fire apparatus. So we will, we're committed to solving that problem over the long term, but, but this new funding with this reallocation in coordination with your continued drumbeat on this issue, Councilman, will solve the most urgent needs.
Right, and, and I do, I appreciate that. Uh, I just wanna make clear that this is, this, this helps, helps us through this year, but we're gonna have to allocate money yearly and more of it, I believe, towards the fleet across the board.
Absolutely, yes.
So, but I'm grateful that we at least got that part done for this year. The, uh, pumper truck, were we working with the, um, Lodge One on this closely?
Lot, lot, Lodge One, um, well, the I, the I A F F.
Right, right.
Um, I don't believe it's Lodge One, that, that's.
No, you're right, you're right, that's police.
But, but the, the, um, the local union representing our firefighters, the I A F F and the P B P command work very closely on the specs of all, all new apparatus.
Yeah, because I promised them, last, when I came into office under the Paduto administration, they ordered, I wanna say three, three pumppers that were not adequate, they didn't meet our specs and they were very unhappy with them. So I just wanna make sure you are communicating with them as to making sure they get the right apparatus.
We are, we corrected the issue that you just raised last year.
Right.
Um, we, we, we adjusted the order to meet the, uh, jointly agreed to specifications of both the union and the bureau. We are still awaiting delivery of that apparatus because, as I said, um, the timeline between order and delivery grew dramatically during COVID and during the ARPA era. So we, we don't, I, we don't have those new vehicles, um, in service yet, but we were able in the first half of 2022 to head off that dispute, adjust the order to correspond to the jointly agreed to, um, command and union specifications, and we will take delivery of those, uh, apparatus in a manner consistent with that joint agreement. Hopefully sometime before 2027, again, I, I wish I could say more specifically, but, but, um, there are three manufacturers of fire apparatus in the entire United States, all of whom are overwhelmed with new orders, and so we are seeking to address that.
And the new pumper, we, we're not able to order that just yet, but we're gonna order that as expediently as we can.
Again, I, I, I just will, for the sake of clarity, say, as of today, we believe, and I believe it will remain the case, that a new pumper is the most urgent need, but we have about a month or so to figure that out, and if it turns out that, um, at the appropriate time, a new ladder truck is in fact a more urgent need, we'll order that. In either case, we'll order it consistent with the specs.
Okay, no, good work on it, you know, I'm glad that we worked together on that, and I think we, uh, got what we need for the time being at least in order to save off crisis, really.
Great, thank you.
Uh, the, the, um, getting to the U R A properties that the U R A owns, how did they acquire them and how many are there? Do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head how many they own. I believe they own about a third the number that we do, we own 1,400, so about 4,000, give or take, but that, that's just me doing quick math in my head, please don't hold me to that specific figure, but it's in that ballpark.
Yeah, and there are structures on those properties.
Some of them, yes, some of them.
Got it, got it. Um, I'm just interested in the process. Now, now you have that money, and I understand 2024, everything has to be under contract, and that, that is like coming fast.
Yes.
What is the process? So, so U R A owns, say, a property. Um, are we currently sending people, a general contractor there to kind of analyze it?
No.
No?
We, we have no resources with which to, with which to do that. This funding would allow us to do that and allow us to then, um, well, would allow the U R A, if they are granted these funds, to send someone there to do that evaluation and then allow them to be authorized to expend funds to stabilize it, to prevent its further degradation as it waits in queue to be disposed of.
My, my question is this, I guess, uh, so if there is a said property that we're looking at, what's the first step as to stabilization? We have to send somebody there to inspect it, no?
Yeah.
Okay, who would that be? Is it somebody we have on call? Is it, have we used?
Um, un, under this, under the, this proposed reallocation, it would be someone that the U R A would place, as you're saying, under contract to do that evaluation.
Right, so they would come back with a set of recommendations for this property, needs a new roof gutter system, you name it, and then it could be, you know, diverted, whether it be to the land bank or, you know, Habitat for Humanity or City of Bridges or something in that case, right?
Correct, they would, they would have 3, 3.5 million dollars to expend on that type of stabilization. In tandem, the land bank would have 3.5 million dollars to take the ones that are in good enough condition now to not, either because they have a structure that's in decent condition or a clear parcel that's ready for repositioning, to move that lowest hanging fruit, if you will, through the title clearance process into the disposition process. Meanwhile, the next tranche of properties that are in worse shape and need some stabilization to, um, keep them in a holding pattern until they can get into that cycle two years from now, will be stabilized so they don't deteriorate further. Um, we intend to make parallel investments in city-owned properties through the, uh, proposed 2024 budget, but this is the most expedient way to address the particular needs of, uh, properties in the present U R A portfolio.
Tell me if you understand this the way I do. I've talked to some nonprofits. Um, so if we decide to put $40,000 into a property to stabilize it, right? Um, then we turn it to the land bank, the land bank goes to one of the nonprofits out there to do this kind of work. Um, then, once they secure their funding, we are then reimbursed for our $40,000 investment. Is that the way you understand it?
No. No, no, I mean, uh, potentially in some circumstances, but not 100% of the time or as a uniform condition, no. Um, it's possible, depending on the sales agreement from the U R A to the nonprofit, that it, that it is, that, that a partial or full reimbursement of our costs could be recovered, but that's contingent upon the particular agreement, which itself is contingent upon expert guidance on whether that could reasonably be recovered and what the costs to the, um, nonprofit are. I would not anticipate in most cases that we would be reimbursed anything because I would anticipate that our costs plus the nonprofit's costs would exceed the sales price and that the sales price would reimburse the nonprofit for their holding, and we would be, have been making the, um, entire rest of the investment at risk, understanding that, um, that investment of public funds in repositioning and stabilizing a property has a net benefit to the public around the property and a long-term tax benefit to the city. So I would, I would never expect as a rule of thumb that we will recover any of our expenditure in these properties. It may on occasion occur, um, and we would gladly accept it where the market conditions warrant, but that's, that's not the rule of thumb that I have in mind and not something that I think we can reasonably expect across the board.
Yeah, it's not the way it was explained to me.
Well, a, a, again, I'm, I'm not suggesting that it can't occur in some instances and that some nonprofit.
You're saying it exceeds, if we exceed the cost of the home, then we don't expect reimbursement, but I was told by nonprofits that no matter what the cost is, if we stabilize it and then we turn it, put it in their hands through the land bank, that once they receive their federal, state funding, whatever it may be that they chase, then we are reimbursed for our initial.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that that can't occur in an ideal circumstance, and in a circumstance that permits it, we would seek that and would, would accept it. I don't, um, anticipate that that's the across-the-board norm. I anticipate that the value we receive for our investment is the value that the adjacent residents receive from a stabilized real estate market and the value we receive down the line from property taxes.
So we have to be very careful as to what we invest in. We have to make sure that we have somebody inspecting that property saying, yes, this can be rehabbed, because we don't wanna go putting a roof on a place where eventually they're gonna say, oh, this place needs to be knocked down.
We need to be discerning.
Especially if we're not getting our money back.
We need to be discerning and not, um, reinvesting in the stabilization of a property that would be demolished otherwise.
And we're gonna count on a general contractor, I imagine, that the U R A would hire to give us that guidance.
Yes, or, or a property inspector, right? Someone appropriately authorized and certified to make that call and make recommendations to, to, to the agency doing the work. Again, I, I do anticipate that we might embark separate and apart from this ARPA funding on similar work as the city ourselves for our own portfolio, so either the U R A or the city, um, would be reliant on the professional guidance of an appropriately credentialed individual to give us a read on, knock this one down, stabilize this one, and you might get value out of it.
Right.
We, we have to be discerning on that, we have a lot of properties in that.
And we, we could talk about this later, that's fine. I, I, I know of two, um, nonprofits, City of Bridges, Habitat for Humanity, is there a host of others that I don't know about or, and this, is this who we intend to work with?
Well, City, City of Bridges certainly has a wide, a citywide footprint, and in fact, a footprint also in inner ring suburban communities through which they engage in this type of activity, and one of the benefits to the city overall is that when they rehabilitate properties for this purpose, they place them in their land trust, and that becomes a, an affordable, uh, modified homeownership opportunity to the folks they serve, so they're an important partner.
Let me just stop you right there, they're gonna place that in their land trust, meaning it's their property.
Meaning the ground is their property and the structure is the property of the buyer, and because of that divided ownership, they can structure the manner of resale to ensure that the owner of the structure accrues some equity, but on the basis of a defined calculation. It's often a starter home, right, for someone who is moving from, uh, a condition of general economic distress into, uh, financial stability. It's a good, good entry point into, I can't afford to buy a home through the traditional market, I can afford to own it through this modified structure, I own a defined equity investment that becomes the down payment on my next home, which is a market-based purchase, but the trust's ownership of the land ensures that that property is then sold again to a, um, similarly positioned potential owner in need of affordability.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking you, I feel like the land bank, we're all, have high hopes for it. We all know that we're funding it with federal money that we're not gonna have in two or three years.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm trying to think of ways how they could self-sustain themselves, I mean, these properties are assets.
This isn't, this isn't all, uh, and, and it, I apologize, I was winding up to a longer answer before, before you respond with the question. This is not all of the above strategy. There is an important place in this overall construction for the work that City of Bridges does, um, which I've just described. There's an important place for what Habitat for Humanity does, which seeks similar ends by different means. Um, there's an important place for the U There's an important place for the URA's own PGH program, which is kind of a Land Bank Lite, that again, seeks similar objectives, but has less long-term onerous requirements. And there's a place for genuine unrestricted, not land trust-enabled property to affordable buyers. We can do all of these things under one umbrella, position people in a variety of states of need and still serve the need, but we can also ensure financial sustainability for the work.
Okay, I guess, again, I'm looking for the Land Bank to be self-sustaining in the future, because we're not going to have that, right? So these are assets, and whether it's a fee we charge for each property that we transfer, or however.
There are a variety of ways to achieve that, Councilman, and this funding will present us with opportunities to fine-tune those such that by the time ARPA funding expires, we're positioned to achieve that. In the meantime, I think we need, if you will, starting capital to initiate a number of strategies and hone in on those that can be long-term sustained.
Good deal, and I'd like to sit down with you and, whether it's City of Bridges or Habitat, and talk about that reimbursement that I was told that they.
Once again, I'm not saying that that's not impossible, I'm saying it's not guaranteed in any case.
I was told it was guaranteed, but maybe he was wrong, I don't know. Okay, that's fine, and we'll straighten out as I go, as we go along. Everybody's breaking your rule rev, you know, so.
I'm under like 30 seconds, I swear, because I couldn't help it, since I had some time. So I've been asking the URA for their list of parcels, and so I'm pretty sure I've got a fairly recent one from 2023, and it's 1,660 parcels.
Then I apologize, I.
That's okay. And I will also clarify further for Councilman Coghill that they are the vast majority of them vacant parcel, vacant land, specifically vacant land. There are some streets, there are some parking structures, like down at the Technology Center that the URA owns. I count 56 vacant structures. That's it. That's it, in the URA inventory, so.
Did you say vacant structures or structures?
Structures, so there's like, you know, more than 1,000 vacant land, but like buildings that aren't occupied that need to be stabilized. Maybe some of them, you know, barely need to be stabilized, but there's only 56 currently owned by the URA.
May I?
I don't know, Councilwoman Burgess, I promised Councilwoman Burgess that was going to be like 10 seconds, so.
Okay, so, so thank you for that explanation. You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any other discussion on the bill? Ms. Warwick.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. So this interoperable communications and radio system, so I remember from the budget hearings that there was some like, I want to say like $16 million, so why are we putting more money toward this? I mean, because that's, I mean, it's 651,876.
In the context of a $16 million overall appropriation, that's a small marginal cost increase that we incurred between the authorization and the attempt to purchase, and I believe some of that goes to perishable components of those systems. Am I right, Craig Patrick?
No, that's correct, and the initial, the majority of that, the $16 million, is actually grant funding we'll be receiving, so this would be the beginning of the city's actual contribution.
Right.
If you think about, if anyone can picture, around the table can picture, a police officer or firefighter or EMT as they're in their full turnout gear, right? They've got a radio, that radio has an antenna on it, and it likely has a curled wire leading up to a microphone speaker piece. The $16 million essentially pays for the replacement of the core rectangular unit that actually connects them to everyone else, which is a long-term asset that we own. The antenna and the wire leading to the speaker break much more often than the actual radio itself, so we have to purchase those on a more frequent basis, and some of those consumable, if you will, subcomponents of the system require more frequent investment.
Yeah, I mean, the price tag on these things is just shocking.
Free, but.
I wish that there was some industry, like some competition in this industry, because it's really.
Competition in this space is minimal, and I would agree that public sector agencies bear the brunt of that, but we have a non-negotiable obligation to public safety that occasionally requires us to bear that cost.
So now, the bill, thank you very much, is ready for final action. On favor that passes the bill, we'll vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Would you like me to go out there and see if he's there?
Should we go grab? Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
No on 1710, aye on all remaining bills.
Mr. Lavelle. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, pro temp.
Aye.
Seven ayes on Bill 1710 and one no, and eight ayes on Bills 1704, 1705, 1706, 1707, 1708, 1709, and 1711.
The bill having received, the legally required number of votes is passed finally. And now I need to, I need to make an announcement again. Council recess will begin tomorrow, August 2nd, and will end Thursday, August 24th, and the first regular council meeting will, after recess, will be Friday, August 25th at 10:00 a.m. I need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
The move.
Second, your second.
Okay.
All those in favor who sent the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, members. Did a great job.